Kick you out of the meeting and have you sign back in, maybe that'll fix your microphone problem.
Just checking to see if my microphone's working properly.
Yes, Mr. Townsend, we can hear you.
All right, can you hear me now?
Yeah, thank you, sir.
All right, great. Call the meeting to order. The August 10th meeting, the Shelby Township Planning Commission, and I'll ask the Secretary to call the roll, please.
Mr. Dallow, absent. Ms. DeCicco?
Here.
Ms. Gonzalez?
Here.
Mr. Meredith?
Here.
Mr. Turner?
Here.
Mr. Appone? Mr. Appone? Absent. Mr. Flynn? Absent. Chairman Moffett, we have a quorum.
Great, thank you. First item is approval of the agenda. The first item of the agenda that was was published regarding the rezoning petition number 02-20 and site plan dash 20-05, special land use number one, Mark Lockwood, has been removed from the agenda. I think they need another one to to update what they're proposing. So with that amendment, I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda. More support by DeCicco, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next item is approved of minutes from the July 27th meeting.
So move.
Support.
By Turner, support by DeCicco. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, so this evening, we've got three new items and then one old item. First, site plan number 20-13, special land use number four. Karim Gorges, Shelby Auto Sales. This is a public hearing, so I'll ask the Secretary to read the notice.
Charter Township of Shelby, notice of public hearing. Notice is hereby given that the planning commission for the Charter Township of Shelby, McComb County, Michigan, has received a request for approval for the following special land use. Applicant Karim Gorges, Shelby Auto Sales, 15722 Winter Park Drive, McComb Township, Michigan, 48044. Proposed use: outdoor storage for used vehicle sales. Location: 50619 Central Park Industrial, parcel number 23-07-23-204-003. This is south of 23 Mile Road, west of Shainer. Site plan number 20-13 SLU-4. Sidwell number 23-07-23-204-003. Legal description is as follows. Planning Commission will meet on Monday, August 10th, 2020 at 7:00 PM via Zoom for the purpose of holding a public hearing on the special land use application. The meeting will be held via Zoom due to the COVID-19 pandemic. You may participate at no cost in the virtual meeting by calling the following number. Dial 1, air code 3126266799. Meeting ID number 83137669175. The application for special land use and site plan may be examined at the Planning and Zoning Department in the municipal building Monday through Friday from 8:30 AM to 5:00 PM. Comments may be submitted to the Planning Commission at the above address prior to the hearing. Oral comments will be heard during the public hearing. This notice is provided pursuant to the requirements of Michigan Public Act 110 of 2006 as amended. Shelby Township Planning Commission Jerome Moffett Chair, Raquel Moore Secretary. This was published in the Shelby Utica News on July 22nd, 2020. There were 64 property owners and one applicant were notified by first-class mail on July 21st, 2020.
Thank you. Mr. Cook, could can you explain the uses under the present zoning and if this request is appropriate?
Yes, this request is appropriate. Under the current zoning, it's an LM district. That's our least intense industrial district. In this case, this is a permitted use. The car sales are permitted use. However, this type of outdoor storage and display is required to get a special land use. This allows you to kind of protect the existing development, the existing buildings and the parking around it, and the notice meets the statute.
Thank you. Ms. Moore, did we receive any correspondence on this?
No, we did not, Mr. Chair.
The the format for the public hearing this evening will be as follows. The petitioner will state their request and what the reasons for it. I'll then turn it back to the the board for any questions or comments they may have on the request. I'll then open it up to the public to ask any questions or make any comments. I'll note those, then bring the petitioner back up to to respond to what's issues have been raised. At this point, is the petitioner here or representative? You can state your name and your address, and then again, what are you requesting and why? This is George. Your microphone apparently does not work. I'm going to remove from the meeting and bring you back in. It's okay here on that one, but I see you've got a second one under Shelby Auto Sales. Could you dial in that way instead? Worst case scenario, you can always join us by phone. Mr. Chairman, would you like to ask petitioner to dial in by phone instead?
Oh, he can't hear you.
No, he can hear me. I'm just asking if that's what you'd like.
Yeah. Did you hear me now?
I just shut off one of yours, please.
When it rains, of course. Could you guys hear me now? Yep. All right, good. Oh, sorry about that. This is my first time using Zoom, so. Problem.
Okay, so what, want you to tell us a little bit about your business and what you're looking from this body to do for you?
Yeah, so we've been at this location for just above seven, going over seven years now. Originally, we requested five to six vehicles to be stored outdoors. So since then, our business grew, and that's why we were requesting an additional amount of vehicles outside. And the vehicles that we're storing outside are all vehicles that are operable, so there's not going to be any damaged vehicles, wrecked vehicles outside. Another thing is, we've also talked to our units, so our neighbors next to us, there's three on the left of us and one on the right of us. They don't use much parking spots, so we approached them and spoke with them, and we asked them if it's okay if we park behind the building, behind their garage, and on the side. And they were okay with it. They just said we usually need one or two vehicle spaces in front of the in front of the office, so they were okay with it. So that's about four units. So we got a side of the building, which the end unit says he doesn't need the parking spots, and also behind the building. So that's why we requested about 25 vehicles to be stored outside, operable vehicles. And as well as we talked to the landlord, and the landlord signed off on it as well, and he says he's okay with it.
Okay. To the board, any questions? Franticly looking to unmute themselves, so I will now open this up to the public. This is the only public hearing the planning commission will hold. All remarks will be entered into board evaluation. We are recommending body, and the township board will evaluate our recommendation, which is legislative body. The township board will make the final decision on the special land use request. At this time, anyone from the public is is free to offer their opinion or ask any questions that they may have. Does anyone wish to comment on this? Ask any questions going once? Going twice? Yeah, we'll bring it back to the board and to our planner for her comments.
Okay, Chairman Moffett, it looks like there are no questions from the board, so I'll proceed with my review. As Mr. Gorges noted that this is an industrial building, and this is sort of a T-shaped driveway on this site. There's plenty of parking spaces. In 2015, when this site was approved, there was an additional 27 parking spaces provided for this site. So I don't anticipate any issues with this. However, our zoning ordinance has regulations that apply to lease to used vehicle display lots, and in section 4.44, so I would just like to recommend that the applicant comply with those standards in the zoning ordinance. But other than that, I don't have a problem with it. He's utilizing parking spaces to the north and west of the parking of the parking that's provided for those buildings, so I don't have any issues with this concern, as long as he abides by that section that I noted of the zoning ordinance, which is 4.44.
Maybe even 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 more superior to our allowing him these access or to use these sites for display. He has an arrangement with his landlord, right? So at some, at the point to which if this building's use changes and there's a greater demand on parking, that's something he's going to have to deal with with his landlord for approval, right?
Correct. Yes, he does have a letter from the landlord indicating that it is okay, and that is the other reason that we decided to go the special land use route for the outdoor storage on this site, only because it gives all the tenants in that in those buildings an opportunity to voice their opinion as well.
Okay. All right, I just I just want to make sure going through the, this really doesn't lock in perpetuity this use in this location, that it is still somewhat fluid.
Corrected strictly for the Shelby Auto Sales.
Hello. Hey, I do want to comment. All right, go ahead. I need your name. Hang on, hang on. Your name, your address. Hello.
So someone that wants to comment on this, I haven't closed the public hearing yet, so it's still appropriate. What's your name and your address, and then what's your comment?
It would be Kurt Rose Inc., it would be 50673 Central Industrial Drive. My comments are two things. Right now, they're parking on, which would be the east side of the building, Building B, and they're taking up like seven spots. My whole thing is, if they're wanting all those things, they have not talked to us across. They're just automatically parking their vehicles on Building B. So if they're going to take up all those spaces that they want, fine and dandy over there. I don't have a problem with that, per se, but if their customers or or their employees are going to start parking over in on the Building B side, which would be in front of them where their cars are now, I do have a problem. There's not enough spaces around our building right now with the dance, the workout. Our our building, as far as A and B commercials building up, the HVAC company is building up. So if he's taking all those, he's got to be assuring that he will never ever park any of his vehicles and or customer vehicles on Building B's area.
Okay, is that, is that your, any other questions or comments?
Yeah, Kurt, we're requesting the north side of the parking and the the I understand what you're requesting. Yeah, so you're parking, you're parking right now on Building B, and you're taking up all their space. So that's the problem I have.
You've asked your question. I'm going to let him answer, and then we'll decide what what's appropriate or not.
So Kurt, the, so if you look at our building, the south of our building, we don't park over there. That's all the construction guys and their trailers over there. So we're parking on the north side, the north side, and the west behind the behind the building. You remember the other day on the north side, you told me, hey, can you move these couple of cars because your trailer's coming? So on the other side of the building, where the mailboxes are at, which is the south side, we don't park any vehicles there. Those are all the different tenants, which are the the construction guys with their with their trailers and their and their trucks. So we were only requesting the back of the building and the in the in the north side, so the west and north side. So that side, we don't have any any vehicles over there.
Okay, so you're not, you're not, you're not going to park, and your your customers, your employees will not be parking on the east side by by Building B?
No, no, we're only going to be parking the vehicles behind the building, which is the west side of the building, and on the side, the north side of the building. That's all we're requesting.
All right.
So the other side of the building by the mailboxes, that's all the trailers and the and the and the vehicles and trucks for the the other tenants here.
But no parking, even other types of parking on that east side of the building? Not just what you're requesting? Okay, because you're taking up, you're taking up spots that you're requesting, but then there potentially you're going to be, those are for the storage of your vehicles? Now, there are other purposes. People come to your business, right? You have employees, they're not parking in those.
No.
I guess the question I would have this, his question is, you're not shifting demand, you know, because you're you're taking those spots, you're not going to shift other spots that you're using.
No, that's all, that's the only spots that we're going to be taking. Now, there's there's also, there's a building next to us that's a that's a detail shop, and they also have vehicles about, usually they're on four to five vehicles they have without plates as well. So those are customer vehicles, other dealerships, they'll detail the vehicles there, and they and they turn them around and and send them back. So if you see additional four or five, there's a detail tenant on the building in front of us.
Okay, I'll bring it back to the board. Do we have any, any final questions or comments? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Move.
Support.
Please, Mr. Chairman, support by DeCicco, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Recommendation this evening must be based on the following standards: compatibility with adjacent land uses, consistent with and promote the intent and purpose of the special land use, compatibility with the natural environment, consistent with the capacities of public services and facilities affected by the proposed use, protect the public health, safety and welfare, and the equity of public access to the site. This evening, we can recommend approval, disapprove the request, or table it to evaluate it further. At this time, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Chairman.
I'll move to recommend approval and forward to the Township Board Special Land Use Application Number 20-13 SLU-4 for Kareem Gorges for Shelby Auto Sales, proposing outdoor storage for the sale of used vehicles for the following reasons. The development of this site will not interfere or discourage the development of a budding property. The proposed outdoor storage use is in harmony with the surrounding development. The site is existing and approved with 27 additional parking spaces than what is required, and the use of the outdoor storage shall comply with section 4.44 Passenger Car Rental and Leasing in Used Vehicle Display Lots in the zoning ordinance.
Is your support?
Support.
Moved by Turner, support by Moore. Are there any questions on the motion? Hearing none. Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Gonzalez?
Yes.
Mr. Meredith?
Yes.
Ms. DeCicco?
Yes.
Chair of the chest. Hey, good luck. Next item, site plan number 20-14.
Thank you, everybody.
Crawford Retail at 56040 Van Dyke is the petitioner or representative here.
My name is Bill Thompson, representing Mr. DiMaterio. Mr. DiMaterio was also a terrible.
Okay, why don't you, if you could, show us what you're requesting?
Yeah, I've got a pictures to show you. If you're willing to listen to what, look at them. If I can get them open.
Yeah, yeah, if you want to screen share what you're proposing, that's fine.
Yeah, supposedly they're opening. There you go. Things seem a little bit slow today. Okay. Previously, you had approved a site plan for Heartland Dental. This was one or two years ago, I guess. And that was part of a larger project that included One Acre to the South, was originally destined to be a restaurant. Mr. DiMaterio is purchasing that property, and he's going planning on putting in commercial prop, commercial building there. As you can see from this slide, he's looking at retail for retail buildings or for retail units inside one building. There's parking, I think 45 parking spaces, an unloading area, detention landscaping, and all the utilities between the two buildings will be shared. There's a joint access driveway coming in off Van Dyke. There's also driveway coming off Crawford. There's joint use agreement for all the parking and all the drives and all the utilities that take that take place on the property. Here's a copy of landscape plan showing the building, handicap parking spaces, landscaping along the Van Dyke frontage, the detention area and landscaping of the detention area. We had not proposed a screen wall along the west property, east property line, excuse me, and I understand that the planning commission would like us to request a variance for that, for the planning department, anyway. Would like us to request a variance for that, and we will be willing to do that. This is a copy of the floor plan. I know the numbers, you can't read them very well. It's a total of 7,100 square feet approximately. Elevations on the building, the area running through now, this is a stone veneer, and then we have brick for the balance of the building, front and rear and sides with a limestone sill about three or three half feet off the ground. That's pretty much it. If you have any questions, Mr. DiMaterio and myself would be glad to answer them for you.
Okay. I believe, Mr. Fiore, you you reviewed this from the planning department. You want to offer your comments, please?
That's correct, thank you. So as Mr. Thompson said, this this proposal was meant to complement the dental offices in the north. I think that does that, it does that architecturally, it does that with the built form, and does that with the proposed uses. The building's designed to kind of cater to the businesses that are sought for in the C1 district, whether it's personal service or, you know, type of a smaller commercial businesses, rather than something that attracts a lot of tra, a lot of traffic. Like Mr. Thompson said, there is a shared drive by this with the site to the site to the north, so it's good for limiting entryways onto Van Dyke Avenue. Overall, this satisfies the intent of the C1 district and the service corridor designation from the master plan. This plan did go through a preliminary review phase where most of the comments and concerns were addressed from the zoning district regulations. The only two major points I want to bring up is, like Mr. Thompson said, with the loading, unloading area in the rear of the building, typically major one screening is required. Major one screening requires a six-foot masonry wall as well as a 30-foot buffer. The site provides a 50-foot buffer approximately with stormwater retention and heavy vegetation. So I would think it would be reasonable to request a variance to not have the masonry wall there, because I feel like it would be out of place with the properties to the north. But that would be up to the planning commission to decide, of course. Other than that, the trash enclosure, the details for the walls will actually be submitted as part of the final site plan submission to make sure they are similar in styles to the primary structure. And on that, most of the other concerns can be handled during the engineering phase of the project. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. To the board, are there any questions or comments?
Mr. Chairman, I have a comment. The variance for the wall, is that a ZBA issue or is that a planning commission issue?
I would think it would be ZBA, but Mr. Fiore, what do you think?
Yes, so if Yeah, so if, uh, to get a variance from the requirement for the major one screening would be handled by the zoning board of appeals, correct?
Just wanted to check, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve site plan twenty dash fourteen for Domeno DiMercurio for five six zero four zero Van Dyke, parcel number twenty-three dash zero seven dash zero three dash one five three dash zero one three, north of Twenty-Five Mile Road, east of Van Dyke Retail Center, seven thousand one hundred and fifteen square feet retail building, subject to the submission of a revised site plan addressing all department comment and approval from the zoning board of appeals.
Support.
Okay, moved by DeSico, supported by, uh, Moore. Are there any questions on the motion? Hearing none, Mr. DeSico?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Turner?
Yes.
Mr. Gonzalez?
Yes.
Mr. Meredith?
Yes.
I vote yes. Good luck.
Thank you very much. I appreciate your time, DeSico.
Uh, next item is site plan number two zero dash one six, Eric Hyderer, uh, Shelby Coney Island at five five one zero zero Shelby Road. Is the petitioner or representative here? Is the petitioner here? See, someone's connecting the audio.
Chairman Moffett, I believe it is the number ending in seven nine zero, but I'm not sure.
Okay.
It sounds like he is on his telephone. Nick, what is the, oh, there he goes.
Yeah, Eric. Yeah, sorry, I was, uh, it was on mute.
Okay, so, uh, you're, can you, who is this and your address, please?
Uh, Eric Hyder, Polyarch, four four zero four five North Grasham, Clinton Township. And we are the architectural firm.
Okay.
Representing the owners of Shelby Coney.
Great. Why don't you, uh, explain what, what, uh, what your, uh, your client is proposing to do at this site?
Hey, the, uh, Shelby Coney's been in business as a Coney Island for the last twenty-three years, and, uh, we plan on doing a kind of a major renovation on the inside and an exterior, uh, renovation to the existing building by adding a outdoor patio to the, uh, south end of the parking lot, a addition in the back to square it off for, you know, a larger kitchen, walk-in cooler, and doing a little, a two-foot extension in the front for a new vestibule. Uh, so we're gonna remove all that, uh, landscaping in the front, which is kind of encroaching off of, uh, uh, Shelby Road, remove all that, put, uh, more, more sod and landscaping in there, and kind of move to an outdoor patio onto the side.
Okay. Um, I think there, there, there are, uh, quite a few questions. I think what you'd, what you're proposing for the facade is, is, is a major improvement and very welcome. Um, I think there's just some questions around, you know, sort of the landscaping and sort of the plan for the parking lot. I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna tell you, let me, I'm gonna call on the planner to offer her comments, and then we can go in from there.
Okay, um, Chairman Moffett, uh, there are a couple of items I, I need, had questions on. Um, first of all, it didn't explain the parameters of the parking lot improvement, if there's gonna be any, if that, uh, entire parking lot was gonna be repaved or just a portion of it.
Also, also in, uh, the sidewalk width on the south side and the west side of the building needs to be increased to five feet.
And, uh, of course, like I said, the landscape, um, plans are required. It sounds like, um, for Mr. Hyder, they, they plan on improving some of the landscaping, so we'll need to see that. And that is largely, um, why I recommended approval, just because, um, we understand that the building and the front, um, the parking lot encroaches into the setbacks. However, since this is an existing building, um, that's not much of an issue, but what you're gonna need to do is, um, commercial sites, um, will require a three-foot-high brick wall along the front of the site, and, um, we'll need that noted on the plans along with some landscaping. So that was, like I said, um, I recommended postponement, just because we, there's, you know, a few things that we still have to have worked out.
Okay, uh, in regards to the parking, we are going to kind of re-patch, uh, all the areas that were in need of, uh, uh, resurfacing, and then we're gonna reseal the entire parking lot and then re-stripe it, uh, as it kind of is existing right now, um, in r- r- relationship to direction. Uh, we're gonna put, you know, propose the new handicap to the north end, uh, on those three spaces. And yeah, then can, w- w- we'll agree to the, the three-foot wall in the front, and yeah, I'll provide a, a landscape plan on what we wanna, uh, do on that front air, area of the, front of the building.
Yeah, um, Eric, one more thing. I was just gonna suggest to you that, um, maybe give me a call in the morning, and we can go over some of the other issues. I know the building department also, uh, indicated that those part, handicap parking spaces to the north that you're, um, proposing. If you are, are you, uh, it looked like you were closing off that front door, so if, if you.
Uh, no, no, the, the front door is gonna remain as, uh, on the west, uh, west end, we're gonna use that, so we're not closing that off.
Okay. I, I think the building department had a concern, if that was going to be closed off, then the parking spaces were gonna need to be relocated closer to the building somewhere, the handicap parking spaces.
Yeah, it is not. That's why we proposed it on that side, because it's gonna be closer to that, to the, to the front door off the, the west elevation.
Okay, okay, makes sense. Thank you.
Okay, to the board, um, are there any questions or comments? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Turner.
I'll move to postpone site plan number twenty dash sixteen for Caterina Margelage for Shelby Coney Island, parcel number twenty-three dash zero seven dash zero five dash three seven six dash zero zero nine, located at the southeast corner of Twenty-Five Mile Road and Shelby Road, based on the applicant submitting a detailed landscaping plan and a site plan addressing all department comments.
Support.
Moved by Turner, support by Moore. Any questions on the motion? Hearing none, Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Gonzalez? Mr. Meredith?
Yes.
Mr. DeSico?
Yes.
Chair of Justice. So hopefully, we'll see, we'll see you back again soon. Uh, next item. Great, thank you. Uh, next, next, uh, item under site plan number one eight dash two zero, for Maniachi Vintage Investment Group, uh, requesting an extension to, uh, about two years ago. Uh, Julie, do you want to just give us a, a brief overview?
Sure, um, at the southwest corner of Twenty-One Mile and, uh, Shana, we approved back in two thousand eighteen. We approved an office building for this site. Um, the applicant is requesting an extension for the site plan, and I would recommend a couple of years, Chairman Moffett. I don't have a problem with extending this site plan due to the pandemic that we've been, um, experiencing. So I'm sure that set a number of plans back, but I don't have an issue with, with an extension on this particular site plan.
Okay, great. Does the board, any members of the board have any questions for the, for the planner on this?
Mr. Chair, I move to extend site plan number eighteen dash thirty for the Maniachi Office Building located at forty-six nine forty-seven Shana Road, parcel number twenty-three dash zero seven dash five dash two twenty-seven dash twenty-two for a period of two years, starting from October nineteenth, two thousand twenty, to expire on October nineteenth, two thousand twenty-two.
Moved by Moore, support by Turner. Any questions on the motion?
Yes.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. Gonzalez? Mr. Meredith?
Yes.
Mr. DeSico?
Yes.
Chair of Justice. Plenary directors report?
I don't have anything to report, Chairman.
Thank you. Business on the floor, is there anyone out there that wishes to address this body? Seeing none, uh, is there a motion to adjourn?
Go move.
Support.
Senator's support by DeSico, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Everyone be well.
Night.
Night. Bye.